All right, we're on, uh, we're here to talk this evening. It opened the Pecoson City Council work session for Monday, October 23rd. We're here to talk about two things in a work session environment. First is councilman, uh, council wanted us all to get together, talk about how to approach the farm animal ordinance or the changes in the farm animal ordinance. I think that's what we're going to talk about first. And then we're going to talk about the capital improvements program, kind of a follow-up from last meeting's discussion of the same. So council, we asked for us to all get together, talk about what changes you wanted to see in the ordinance. So I'm just going to basically open the floor unless you want to start. You're here to take notes, I think. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so council?
I'll start.
Okay.
Um, I don't, this is just me personally, I don't see a need to have specific things about beekeeping, like specific things they have to do. My concern with having nothing in there is that, for example, I have had a complaint by a citizen who had somebody with bees next to them. The bees didn't even happen to be the property owners. They were, belonged to a relative who kept them there. And there were issues with them. And that's when I realized the city had nothing, no recourse for him. There was no ordinance that could be enforced. So what I would, like, there's the section here with farm animals that says, "The zoning administrator shall establish appropriate setbacks and other stipulations as necessary to preserve the residential nature and tranquility of the neighborhood." So I would just like to see something in there for bees that would give citizens, if they did have a neighbor that were, who were not being a good beekeeper, and there were issues, that there would be some recourse for them to be able to go through the city and resolve that issue. Right now, they can do nothing but ask the neighbor, and if the neighbor says, "Sorry, I'm not doing anything," then they're sort of stuck. So that's, um, that's kind of what, and, you know, the same applies to the farm animals. Goats that are too noisy or tearing down fences, you know, I just want the citizens to be able to go through the city because obviously all these are for people who are not being good neighbors or good animal keepers, you know, which I know is a very, is a minority. But in case that does happen, I just want our citizens to let, have recourse through the city somehow.
Okay.
Gene, I'd like to speak on that same topic. I see here that we have a note from Tom Powers, and he's, he has invited us to come by and see his apiary, and I still intend to do that. I apologize that I have not done it yet. But, but he, he talks with good sense on this. And, uh, but I, like Janet, believe there needs to be something in there relative to beekeeping, especially where, when it comes to new apiaries, ones that do not exist now, where neighbors next door may have a serious health hazard related to bee stings and so forth, and, and they need to have some kind of say-so as to whether or not a new hive is put next door to them, okay? And, uh, and so, uh, I think there needs to be some kind of language in there for bees. Uh, I think I mentioned before, I do know of at least two families that, that have people who are severely allergic to these things. My wife happens to be one of them, and, and it would concern me if somebody moved next door with a bee hive. That's the end of my comment relative to bees.
Okay.
Just have a general question. Do we have an ordinance somewhere that addresses nuisance animals that would cover this?
I believe I asked Randy, and he said, "No, we don't have anything that would cover that."
So what, what were you going to say?
Just the farm animals.
Just the farm animals.
Not animals in, but not animals in general.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Buddy?
Like, we share that a lot with beekeeping, because, I mean, I always bring up the right of social advantage. Ocean's stand backyard, somebody complains, says they put a bee hive there, the neighbor complains, we have no recourse. And I think there should be a permit for it. Otherwise, how are you going to know who's got it? If we just say, "Okay, come here and tell us if you have a bee hive." It's like, "Okay, if you want to pay your taxes, just come do it." We figure out what you're, is it going to work? I think there's got to be some kind of mechanism so we know who's got it. And it's for bear safety, too, because if we do fall, or if the Air Force happens, or whoever decides to spray again, we need to notify them. And we're not going to know who they are unless they have some kind of protocol, we know where they are. I think that the offset from the property line is a good thing. I've talked to three, I don't, they're very active. I know that's not all of them in the city, but they all agree that there should be some regulation, they have no problem. And the idea of requiring water is excellent thing, because if they're going to go to water, they have to have water. And if we have no way of ensuring that they have that, it's not in our ordinance, there 's nothing we can do about it. They also told me that if you move a hive more than two feet, the bees can't find their way back. If you move it two miles, they can somehow find it. So if you've got one that, if you've got a hive now that's on a property line and close to it, you want to have some kind of, they said, "If you put any kind of barrier in front of that hive, the bees come out and go up as they want." They, for yourself, never go directly from, maybe. So something in there that says we need to have a barrier in front of the hive business, a grandfathered hive that does the meat and set.
All right. Anybody else? How about the, how about the farm animals themselves? Originally, what we, we received was a farm animal change to recognize, I guess it was pygmy animals and the like, and have different rules for the, versus regular farm animals. So what kind of direction, because whatever we do this evening is just going to end up going back to the planning commission with some direction.
Well, I, I personally think, Gene, a horse is not a horse. And, uh...
A horse is not or is a horse?
A horse is not a horse. A, a, a pygmy horse is not the same as a big horse, and I think the, the requirements for them should be different, the same for, for other pygmy-type animals. Um, I think, I think there needs to be differentiation there.
Well, I feel like it, to make it easy for the staff, let's pick the, the most restrictive one, which is pygmy horses, a thousand square feet per animal, make that true to all of them. I happen to know somebody that owns pygmy goats. They can be hyper, they can be loud. He happened to name one of them after me, which was very endearing. But I, I think that to make it easy for the staff, make it all a thousand square feet per whatever pygmy you've got.
I agree with that idea. I don't know that a thousand feet fits every animal, but whatever does, I think that approach is, I agree with that approach.
Yeah, I'm okay with that approach, as long as, like I mentioned with the bees, if the animals are, you know, because I don't know what a thousand square feet is. I'm not good at distances. But, you know, if you end up with a, a pygmy goat in a neighborhood like mine that has houses all around it, and it's creating a lot of noise and rubbing against the fences, which goats do, and tearing down a fence, you know, my concern is the same, that our citizens have some recourse through the city to resolve that situation if their neighbor is not amenable to resolving it one-on-one.
That was why I asked about if we had a rule about nuisance animals.
If I could just speak to the subject of these pygmy horses and kind of the deliberations that we went through with the planning commission.
Mike?
It's all.
All right, good. I just want to make sure everybody can hear you.
There we go. Um, so we went through, did a bunch of research while we were taking this to the planning commission, and there's no real set standards in place. It's kind of a developing field. There's not a lot of, of stuff to work on. I know there's a lot of other localities in our area and across the country that are dealing with this same issue of how do you regulate miniature animals, miniature horses. One of the things that we came to the conclusion was that 1,000 square feet probably wouldn't be enough for one or two of these animals, and they would probably be best in pairs. But we were looking at something like a quarter of an acre, maybe up, down to a tenth of an acre, would probably be an appropriate and humane amount of space. It depends upon the conditions of the animals. It depends upon whether they're free-range or whether they're being fed from a trough or something, and they're not grazing grass. But 1,000 square feet, we figured, probably wouldn't be enough space for two of these animals. The second thing, and I think this is one of the reasons why the planning commission ultimately decided not to include this language in the draft of their ordinance, was that because, as councilwoman Andrews said, we don't really have a recourse process for nuisance animals or for farm animals that people take objection to. There's no way to appeal a farm animal permit. And if you establish a standard that, say, need two animals, 1,000 square foot space each, then suddenly, a lot of people's backyards, you could have a horse in, just a standard backyard in any part of town. And if it was allowed in an ordinance by right, it could just happen, and if someone took offense to that, if someone was allergic, if someone had a problem with that, there really wouldn't be any recourse in our current ordinance to deal with that.
Anyone else? All right, so let me try to, try to sum up. What I've heard is there's some interest in, in whatever we do to regulating beekeeping. If, if we do that, I would just make sure that we understand that, you know, there's, there's no magic to flying insects today. You know, I don't know what their range is. Their range is much larger than whatever yard they're parked in, right? So that would be one thing to think about, you know, and I, I would tell you, I think we're opening Pandora's box by entertaining any of it. If I had, had I, if, had we taken that to a vote, my plan was to vote no. Okay? And I, I'll be right up front with you that I, you know, I think there's some things that we get right in the city. And I don't think that, what I'm hearing from everybody here is that if it was their next-door neighbor, would they want a horse next door? I don't care. Forget pygmy horse, forget pygmy goat, a horse. I'm not anti-farm animal. I think farm animals have a place within the city, and I will tell you, I don't think it's within a residential neighborhood. Um, you know, I would tell you that we, maybe we are too tight where they can go, and that they're, I think, right now, our requirement is basically their grandfather, of a lot of our stuff, is grandfathered in place. I would think that the acreage that we're looking for is something that can really house So I'm talking of places that are an acre or more, which puts them out of residential, um, in, out of the communities, because I will tell you that I think that we're going to have people standing there within a year of adopting something, saying, "Well, I didn't really realize you were opening it up to our neighborhood." Okay? And most of our neighborhoods are close, even the newer neighborhoods are even, seems like, closer, because the houses are getting larger on the same-sized lots. So I'm not anti-farm animal, I just think that they have a place, and I think our ordinance kind of has it right. So I'm wondering if we're just trying to regulate something because we feel like we have to. Now, as far as the beekeeping, I have no problem saying that there's going to be a setback off of somebody's property line. No problem whatsoever for future aviaries or whatever that they are, because I don't think that impedes your ability to do that. But to basically say, "Well, you, you can have this one," I just think, I'm, I'm thinking, why do we want to insert our city staff into what I think is going to be a growing population of, of issues when we're not really hearing? I, I don't remember anybody coming in here saying, "I want to have a pygmy horse in my backyard." I don't remember that, I don't remember that, that dying swell at the, at the podium here saying, "We need to allow this." So in lack of that, I'm trying to figure out why we're doing anything. And I think sometimes that not doing anything is the right, right posture to take. And if you want to add bees to the existing ordinance, I, I have no problem with that as long as we don't outlaw beekeeping, because guess what? Those bees are going to be there next week, brother. You have the bee hive. I hope that they're there, because they do do a lot of good things for our society, right? But, you know, if you can't have them, who can? So I would just think that we take a step back, table it, and tell there's an outcry for something, and maybe some ideas come in. But I hate to send something back down to the planning commission, and it come back up here, which they've tried once, and I think that they were seeing the same thing that we just talked about it. Everybody's got an opinion of what works. But in lack of the cry for that this is a problem in our city, what are we doing? That's my, that's my two cents. But I'm willing to follow the advice of all of council, but I'm like, why are we? I, I don't quite understand what we're trying to fix.
I agree with you. Often doing nothing is the best solution. But I'm not sure that these little baby pet horses, whatever the proper term is, are a, or is a farm animal. I'm not sure they should fall into that category. I think they're more like pets.
Well, they graze on yards. They, they still have the same habits of a, of a full-size animal.
But they're smaller.
I understand.
And they can't go in, well, I guess they could go inside, but I don't think people keep them in.
They're not next to us in our, in our, in what we consider to be the right zoning today. The right zoning today is, I mean, most of our neighborhoods are residential in nature. When people get outside that box, I can remember at least a, a couple cases where things have changed on Little Florida Road, and with chickens, we tried to do chickens right, right? That was the last time that we tried to do anything with this ordinance. And quite honestly, I'm just not hearing the clamor for, and if we make a big deal and say, "Okay, well, we need to do this now," guarantee you, people will take us up on our offer, okay? And they'll decide that, hey, while it didn't used to be allowed, it is allowed now, and council thinks it's a really good idea. Okay? Because I'm not hearing that overwhelming draw for us to go do something. So that's, that's my two cents worth of judgment, is that what are we trying to fix? And except for the bees, which don't have any guidance, which I, I think we can all agree, okay, the water or the, the property line adjustment, what are we trying to fix?
I'm not so sure we're trying to fix anything. I think we're trying to be proactive. And if you, if the size is what bothers you, I think not doing anything, considering a pygmy animal is a full-blown farm animal, I don't think is right. I don't remember any hue and cry for anything to make an ordinance or pass a law, except for no Walmart. And so, you know, I don't think you're going to get the hue and cry, but I think we ought to be proactive. And if you want to make it a quarter of an acre per animal, that's fine. Most residential lots don't have a quarter of an acre in their backyard.
Uh, with you. That's why I'm saying, so what are the, what is the, I'm just trying to find out if there's a commonality in language that, let's say that you happen to own five acres and you want to do this? Great. I mean, I want you to be able to have full-size animals if that's the case, but on a quarter-acre lot, or a third-acre lot, whatever our minimum lot size is, I'm trying to figure out why we would want to insert this into the neighborhoods right now.
We allow pets in residential areas. And if a person thinks their little miniature-sized horse is a pet, and we don't allow that, then we're determining what kind of pets the city, you know, residents can have. I don't think government should do that either. So I think maybe we need a definition of what these pygmy animals really are, maybe.
Or what farm animals are. Uh, and, and, and my last comment is that, you know, the, the less regulation, the better as far as I'm concerned, but there needs to be some regulation relative to new apiaries, primarily because of health reasons for people. Okay? And, and if it's going to be a new, new bee hive put someplace, then the, the setback constraints and water and, and approval by the adjacent neighbors is, is an important thing. If you move into a, a new next-door to a house that's got a bee hive, you know that going in, right? But if you already live there and somebody puts a bee hive next to you, and if your health gets, gets put at risk because of that, that's a different situation.
Okay. So they, they sent us some language, I'm sorry. They sent us some language last time, where it says, "Beekeeping is allowed in residential areas. All bee hives must meet a 10-foot property line setback requirement. Adequate water supply must be provided within 50 feet of that bee hive. And a permit shall not be required for the keeping of bees. However, owners must notify the public works department upon installation or removal so that they can be maintained in accordance with, of the Code of Virginia," which actually does have a ordinance for that. So, and that's basically, just kicks in the requirement. Sounds to me like everybody's o, probably okay with that language.
But there's no comment from the adjacent neighbors, the directly adjacent neighbors.
So you would ask that, that basically, that the adjacent neighbors agree to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I, well, I just wanted to clarify, because I know in that presentation that he gave, one of his concerns as a beekeeper was, well, you constantly have new neighbors coming in. I would assume that that would only be when you put the bees in, the neighbor that's there when you put it in, that you don't have to get that for every neighbor that rolls through the neighborhood.
All right. If, if, if the neighbors are there and you bring in the bee hive, then you need permission from the adjacent neighbors, okay? If the bee hive is already there and a new neighbor moves in, then they, the real estate people should notify them, "Hey, there's bees next door."
Right.
But the, that, that should not impact the person who already has the bees.
Okay. So the, so the way ahead, correct me if I'm wrong here, Judy, but on bee hives, we could add that to the existing ordinance without going back to the planning commission? Because they sent this language to us, right? So that's already been through the planning commission. This is what came from them.
Well, does everybody agree that there's, there should not be a permit?
All I'm saying is, can we tweak this within council to do what Buddy, what, you know, if you're concerned about a permit, or you're concerned about anybody else, why refer this back down? Why not just handle this and say, "Bring us an ordinance that does this." And then during the council meeting that night, if you want to propose amendments to it, then we just move forward with that.
Was this in the advertised version? Because I thought they took out all the beekeeping before it was advertised.
If I understand what happened is, the staff recommended the bee hive language in the draft that went to planning commission, but when planning commission approved and sent it to you, that language is not, because the yellow, the yellow copy is the one that came to you.
Okay.
The blue copy is the one that was presented to planning commission. So the, the ordinance that was forwarded to you doesn't have the bee hive language in it.
Okay. So it would have to go back down?
It is, it is in the blue copy, but that was not forwarded by.
All right, so would it have to go back down to the plan? What I'm hearing is...
You don't, you don't have to send it back to planning commission. It was advertised.
That's what I'm saying, so...
But was it advertised with the bee language?
The, the... We'll re-advertise it. I, I don't have any problem with that.
I haven't seen the ad, but what was, I'm assuming what was advertised or what was presented to the planning commission, that did have bee hive language in it. That, that's what I'm saying. So it was advertised in the sense that there apparently was bee hive language in the ordinance that was advertised in the newspaper.
Okay.
But then, but I haven't seen the ad, so I'm not telling you I know that for a fact.
Well, can we just run that question down? But I, I just don't think that, it sounds to me like everybody knows what they want to do, so why refer it back down?
If I'm remembering correctly, the advertisement...
Punch your mic there. Punch it.
The advertisement that was presented or advertised for this particular version that came forward from the planning commission does not include the bees at all. There's no language.
But it was in the, the one that planning commission advertised, but it wasn't in the one council advertised. Is that what you're saying?
I cannot recall exactly if it was included in the planning commission's advertisement. I believe that it was, because I think what the planning commission ultimately did was remove the language.
That's what I thought.
From the ordinance before they forwarded the recommendation to the plant, I mean, to city council.
And so if that, if that's the case, like I said, before we do anything, we'll re-advertise what we're going to do, right?
If it wasn't included in your ad, you have to re-advertise it.
So I'm just trying to figure out why I need to refer this back down to the planning commission for bees. Right?
I'd just like to ask a question about what, what do we see as a benefit for getting a permit?
So that we'll know who's got them.
And the benefit for that?
Huh?
And what's the benefit of us knowing?
Benefit for that is for the bee hive owner, so that if we do spray, they can be warned that, that that's going to happen, and they'll know where they are.
Well, I think right now, we ask them to let public works know, rather than making them come get a permit beforehand. They just inform public works that, you know, "One, two, three, A Street, I've got a bee hive."
So let me ask you this, Carrie, if, in trying to, trying to negotiate it right here, which is probably not the right place, but if we want to have a permit, but we want to kind of piggy, piggyback on what the commissioner brought us a couple weeks ago, which is a one-time permit, not a, not a yearly fee.
Right.
Then, then basically, it's the same as a notification. It's just that, you know, we now know where they are, and we can notify you when we're spraying in that area.
I'm not totally opposed to a permit.
I don't really care if they charge for the permit. It can be a free permit. Just get one, so we'll know where they are.
Yeah, I'm not totally opposed to a permit. I just wonder why we were going to cause a citizen to have to take an extra step.
Every year, yeah.
Every year, if they wanted a bee hive.
No, I don't mean every year. One time.
So just as well it be their burden to notify us if they want notification for spraying, rather than us require them, just less government.
And they renew it every year.
Yeah. So there's some language in there that they brought us that, that talked about annual renewals. But remember, we saw this before we got the briefing from the commissioner, saying, "Hey, I'd like to do, I'd like to lessen the fees on dog licenses," I think it was, that he brought us. And I, I think we could wrap all that up. All I'm saying is, I think we can handle the bees without referring anything back. And I would just ask that the city attorney review, make sure we're doing it the right way. I think we are. And if we find out that it needs to go back down, I'm hearing a consensus here to send it back down to planning commission, right? So either way, it moves forward.
And I'm assuming in this advertisement, you wanted to say... Hey, in the advertisement, you wanted to say that there will be a one-time permit?
Yeah.
Is that a consensus?
Is that a consensus?
Everybody agrees with a permit?
Yeah. A, a one-time permit is fine, okay, but the permit needs to require approval of the adjacent neighbors.
That's already part of the animal.
Yeah. All right. All right, so I think we have a way ahead on bees. All right, so now, let's, let's skip tracks to what else can we accomplish in this work session, all right? Pygmy animals. So I guess I'm looking for a consensus that, one, is there a consensus that we need to do anything? So let me ask that question.
Well, I would just like some clarification. So as the farm animal ordinance stands now, right, if we do nothing, pygmy animals are not allowed, period. Is that correct?
Well, I'll re...
I, I'm just asking the question.
Ask our planning, planning members to talk about what is and what isn't allowed in today's society.
Based on what the planning commission is recommending, the smaller animals...
No, what's today?
Oh, what today?
Today.
We would apply the same provisions as we do for large animals, which is, requires two acres plus the minimum lot size for the zoning district for one animal, and for each additional hoofed animal, it's one additional acre.
Okay, so they could have pygmy...
We do allow pygmy animals in the city.
We do not, at this point, distinguish between the two. There's no...
Okay. I'm good with that.
So your, so your question is, there is a provision within the existing ordinances to have pygmy animals, but they apply, the same standards apply to them as full-size animals? Right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm with you.
Okay. So do we have a consensus to, to change that? So I, I'm basically, I'll, I'll lead off here, because bottom line, I'm looking for consensus on where to go. So basically, I'm saying, I think we got it right today as far as animal ordinance is concerned, but...
I don't have a problem with that. However, you know, I, I am somewhat of the opinion of Carrie in that pygmy animals could be construed as pets, okay? And, and, um, a, a, a pygmy horse or a pygmy goat would not consume the same amount of grass as a full-size animal, right? And my guess is, most of them would be kept in a house of, housing of some kind and, and hand-fed in any case, and require one or two acres for a horse.
So are you?
They're smaller than some dogs.
So right now, that, I'm just looking for consensus on question one, do we need to do anything? And your answer is yes, no?
I think you need to find a horse or a goat.
Okay. So you're basically saying, you're fine as is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine with it is, but I would like a definition so that we're not viewed as keeping, you know, requiring people not to have the pets of their choice.
Okay. Dave?
As is.
Bud? I mean Buddy?
What, what kind of size did y'all determine would be appropriate? Did you tackle that at all?
For a miniature horse?
Yeah.
As I said, we went through a couple of different numbers, four thousand square feet, one thousand square feet, and then we started thinking, doing a little bit more research. Um, I think the safest minimum would probably be about a tenth of an acre. So four, five thousand square feet per animal as a minimum.
Okay. So, but the, right now, the, the question is not what, but do you want to do something?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say it's do something.
You'd like to, you'd like to say it's do something.
Lower the roof direction.
Understand.
I've got pretty much the same feelings as Vice Mayor. Um, if we've, and I, I'm, I'm a little...
But on both sides of this, on one hand, I think we're, we've got a solution looking for a problem. And on the other, I do think, you know, we need to have some requirements. So unfortunately, I'm kind of hanging in the balance, but I'm not too strong on it either way. I just know we need to get farm animals out of the conversation. Get something done, you know, sometime soon.
Alright, Jan.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I already said, I'm good. Why did we decide to change it? Like, what was the reason that we got something from it? Was there something that initiated it?
I think there was, uh, maybe a, a request that came in through, uh, the planning office on a, on an animal or, or on a particular site or whatever, and we had nothing. So, you know, doing due diligence, they tried to, to do something, and I, I just think that it's still based on a single case here or there.
Have we lodged complaints because of that? I haven't heard of any complaints.
But we do have several of them in the city, and, uh, there were questions about, "Am I legal to have these animals or not?"
Well, right now, right now, by today's ordinance, if you went out and got the animal, you're legal if you're, if you can meet the requirements of the existing ordinance. If you didn't, then you don't. Alright, so what I've heard is, I went around every, correct me if I got that wrong, I'm not hearing a consensus to change anything.
Except bees.
Except for bees.
And how about the rooster thing? Three acres? You can have a rooster? We haven't covered the rooster.
Oh, we haven't done the rooster yet. I forgot about the rooster. Thank you for reminding.
Planning, planning commission, planning commission recommended three acres, which I agree with that.
Okay. Alright, so is everybody, have we got a consensus on the roosters? Okay. So we're gonna handle beekeeping and roosters, uh, in an upcoming council meeting, and we're going to defer any action on pygmies until there's more demand. I'm not saying that staff should not, um, figure out what the right size would be if we ever came back with it. Okay? But, okay. Anything else on farm animals?
Can I just ask a question about the bees? I know at one point, they said something about, um, saying that it shouldn't be more than fifty feet from, um, not the homeowner's property, but another property. Is that some, if we're gonna add stuff, is that something...
I think it says, uh, "A, a water source within fifty feet of any beehive," and then it says, "A property line setback of ten foot." That's what's in the, in the words that were, were being considered. Now, you can moni, you can modify those words up to the night that we, we do it, but I'm...
Okay. Yeah, I was just...
I'm looking to move forward with these words, and then you can modify them the night of the council meeting.
Okay. I was just throwing that out there, 'cause I know that had been discussed, that putting something in, that it needed to be fifty feet from neighboring buildings, neighboring structures. So that was just something to think about.
Okay. Alright. Staff, y'all know what to do with what we've said here? Okay. Alright. Capital improvements Plan, follow-up, uh, discussion on that. So we had the, uh, meeting, uh, we had a meeting a week ago, uh, or two weeks ago, I guess it was. Went through the capital improvements plan. We got a rebrief of what's currently existing in there, which was, uh, basically a mix of, of, uh, smaller items pertaining to vehicles, uh, what I want to call medium-sized, but they're not small, and, uh, in repairs that needed to be done to buildings and facilities, which included roofs and air conditioning units and the like. And then the larger ones, which were the capital improvements for major projects, like a school refurbishment or whatever, or a new police station or whatever. So, does anybody have any particular questions? I see some of staff, uh, is here, in case there was a, a question on a particular thing. But the two things that I remember hearing out of that, and again, correct me if I'm, if I'm hearing, if I'm remembering it incorrectly, but I heard a consensus to move ahead with the fire truck. Uh, and to get that on order, and, uh, that we would figure out how to make that work in the budget. And then I heard that, um, the HVAC for the municipal building, that, again, we said, "Move forward on that item, and we will figure out in the next budget cycle how to pay for that."
City Hall.
City Hall. I'm sorry. Did I, well, I'm sorry, I thought it was, I thought this really was the municipal building. I keep forgetting we got, uh, that one down there. Alright, so anyway, am I hearing, am I remembering that correct?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Mayor, we also talked earlier this year about using some of the investment point beach money.
Yep.
As a down payment for the replacement fire truck.
And we did, and we talked about that as, as, as one of the potential sources.
That's true.
Yep. I think we, I think we did move it last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Just as a comment, the old municipal building also is a place where lots of the public come into to sign up for all kinds of, uh, parks and recs stuff. And, you know, not that we want to move it up, but it, but it is an important place to have.
Okay. So we left that meeting saying we need to have another work session to follow up, um, and basically provide some, uh, some type of guidance to the Planning Commission on the capital improvements plan. So, uh, I'm, I'm basically open the floor here again and say, you know, I've, I've got some ideas, uh, that, of how to do this, to make a unified plan, but I don't want to just talk and, you know, 'cause I'd rather hear if there's other ideas on how y'all wanted to, um, pursue this. Or what kind of direction to send to the Planning Commission.
Will they be considering it without that, knowing the first line for the middle school, what that amount is?
At this time, they would have to, because we're not through that. I, I will tell you that, uh, the information that I've received, and we should be getting that upbrief, uh, is that, uh, they've, they've completed their study, and we'll wait for them to brief us on the outcome of it. Okay? But I think they're getting closer to having an answer there. And by the time it comes out of the Planning Commission, we may be able to fill in that blank. Uh, which would be next year's, uh, com, uh, capital improvements plan. So they may be able to actually have a number that goes in there.
Mr. Mayor, if we exclude that figure for the school and exclude the four point five million for the new public safety building, that would take away the, the highest-priced items. Would it be feasible to consider the remainders for fiscal year 2019? Is that...
Well, I think that's, that's one way to handle this all, or just take care of it all, but I, I know to, to do that, we would have to do a financing plan. But, here's simply speaking, what I, what I had, what I had thought about today, and y'all just take on it, you can actually tell me I'm just dead wrong, 'cause this is a work session, right? So bottom line is, what I, what I see and what I struggle with when I look at a capital improvements plan is that there's, it's a mix of, there's a, you know, potential for a twenty-two million dollar school and a fifty thousand dollar fire truck, or a fifty thousand dollar, uh, expense, all in the same report. Okay? And basically, we've taken it and just tried to average the numbers. I would like to send down to the Planning Commission a couple of, of thoughts. One is, uh, break the capital improvements plan down into a couple of different categories. One is, uh, what we can do for a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which I think is the price of a penny. What can I do for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, and in what order should I do the smaller value programs? Rather be by a, by a dump truck, or by an excavator, or by a, you know, what order should they be in for anything that's less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? A hundred and fifty-eight thousand is what I picked, um, knowing that that's the price of a penny. And what order would we go in? The second would be, the second category would be the more expensive things. And the reason I, just so we're all leveled out here, the reason I picked that number was, that's not something that we would finance. That's something we would just pay for. Then take your intermediate items. Roof repairs on schools, which are sometimes up to a million and a half dollars. Uh, air conditioning systems like the min, like the one here in this building. And put those in a second bucket where you might need to do interim financing, waiting for a major expense to come in the, in terms of doing a new school, and then recombine that with future financing. And how would you attack those issues? And then the third one would be those major ticket items, which is, uh, police station, school, uh, rebuild, and, and trying to say, where do they reside as the, as the third bucket of things? Basically trying to come up with categories to put them in, so that we can have a meaningful plan of small, medium, and large, and how to take those on. And ask staff to work with our consultant in Richmond to try and program the intermediate and large into a unified plan, knowing that I think the smaller stuff that you might pay cash for, or do, you know, in, in a budgetary time, wouldn't need that type of oversight. So, simply, that's, that's my five-thousand-foot version of what I thought might help me personally in a, in a plan like that. So, that's my proposal to send down to the Planning Commission, but it's a proposal.
Alright, I, I'd like to add a couple qualifiers to that, Gene. Uh, we, I have no problem with doing exactly that, okay? But also ask them to look where we can have the big bang for the bucks. I mean, we know we have to have the air conditioning system for the city hall, okay? And we, and we know we need the fire truck. Uh, but there are some other things there that we might be able to go ahead and throw into plan, because it really doesn't cost us much money. Uh, the sidewalk ac- acquisition, if I remember correctly, we spend just ten thousand dollars, we get many thousands or a million dollars from the federal government to pay for the rest of it. Uh, and, and so, you know, to not throw that into the plan would be ridiculous. We spend ten grand and we get a couple million dollars worth of money spent for good public projects without having to spend taxpayer money. And, and the Public Works talks about replacing a truck that might be able to be purchased with V-DOT funds, okay? And so look for the big bang for the buck kind of issues, uh, that we might be able to do that wouldn't take a lot of money from our budget.
Okay.
Well, I think at any one time, if there's a grant, like you're talking about, available, that, that would, we could pick it out of any bucket, depending on the size of the grant. I don't think we need to necessarily separate those from the categories that Gene was talking about. And to clarify one thing, Gene, somebody may not have understood what you said, the cost of a penny. You mean a penny tax increase, I take it, is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Right.
Okay.
So any thoughts on, does that work for everybody? If we were to say, "Planning Committee, will staff put something like that together, refer to the Planning Commission, and let them start to look at that in that vein?" That's all I'm asking.
I'm, I'm good with that. I mean, 'cause I assume if, you know, they come back and they say, "These are the things we think we ought to go forward with," and we do get a grant or some other way, then we can pay for that that way and then use that money for something else.
I think...
Right? As it, as it comes up.
It's never a lock, as, as it is, it's a plan, right? It's a capital improvements plan. That doesn't mean that you can't deviate from the plan. What it means is that here's, in an ideal world, if, if recessions don't hap, don't happen, and, and things don't change, and, you know, insurance rates stay the same, and all of those sorts of things, this is, this would be the plan. But understanding that it can always change based on real-world realities of how much you got this year, you know, and can you fund the plan with your original set of, uh, of circumstances that you laid out.
At this particular time, I don't know how I would go on a tax increase, but just to throw that out. I think everybody's probably the same way right now.
Yeah, even I'm the same. So, you know, I'm just saying, try to put some, some logic to it if you were to do that. But I, what I would not say is that it would be good money to finance ten-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar improvements into one bond issue and have the life of them not outlive the bond. Right? So that's not something you want to pay for shorter term. I think a life of a fire truck may be twenty. We may be talking about financing for thirty. Right? So I, I wouldn't say that it's wise to invest in stuff that doesn't at least meet that category, so. Not saying you can't lump them together. Or maybe, uh, council, and it may not be this council, some council lumps five of them together and says, you know, "We, we need this, 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 and this," and we're gonna substitute it in for one of these intermediate-range projects. They could still do that. But I, I can't think of a way, having never really had a functional capital improvements plan, and that's not a, that's not a, uh, a, uh, a bust on the staff. We just haven't had the money for it. Okay? So now, things are, things are changing a little bit. We can see a light at the end of the tunnel. We're hoping it's not a train, right? So bottom line is, this is the way I see to organize it, at least so that we can, so that we can look at it.
First time this century.
Right.
I think one of the very important part of what we've got is the top two requests for the near-term page, uh, from each department. And the only thing I would encourage us as council to do, and Planning Commission to do, is, you know, we've got the prioritization from, from the departments, but, you know, at some point in this process, we too are gonna have to see where our priorities are, is five hundred thousand dollars for Project A and Department A as crucial as Project B and Department B, you know, for, for the daily, daily routine of the city. Um, so that's something I would certainly tell Planning Commission to keep in the back of their minds, and us as council, as we go through the CIP process, you know, look at some of the dollar signs on some projects and see, you know, well, is that related priority? And if we had that money, or wanted to spend that much money, you know, how many other things could we knock out, or what other projects could we get done? So that's, uh, that's, that's about all I've got as far as the conversation goes.
Mr. Mayor, I know it's not a capital improvement item, but it is related, because ultimately, it will come out of the same till. Uh, we've heard from citizens through the survey, among other ways, no surprise that schools and public safety are, are number-one priorities in this community. And I take issue with the fact that our school employees are the lowest paid around, or certainly among the lowest. I take issue with the fact that our city employees are either the lowest or among the lowest paid around. Uh, I believe that we get what we pay for, and I believe those two issues are way past needing to be addressed. And whatever we ultimately do with those two issues, with compensation for school employees, city employees, it's going to impact the way we deal with our CIP.
I agree with that. But to send direction down to the, to the, is there a better way to slice this bread for what we send to the Planning Commission? Alright, the other thing I'd like, I should've said that there was a fourth category. What is the one, one thing that we seem to buy one of every year? A school bus.
School bus.
A school bus, right? So, you know, direction to, and I know that the Police Division has picked up on this, and that they have a replacement vehicle, I think, in their ongoing budget. I would tell the school system that one bus a year is what they should include in what they send us, because there's no reason for us to struggle every year with that. And the number-one source of money for that school bus has always been whatever's left in their budget, plus whatever we have to plus up to get that bus. And I would just like to recognize that right in the budget thing. Don't, I don't want to have a school bus competing with a dump truck or a fire truck, right? So, I mean, you got to have one. We've got probably 30 buses in the community. I don't know. I'm going off the top of my head. But if we replace one a year, unless we come into a bump in the road, that's, I would like to have that kind of sentence to him.
And because we're budgeting a whole lot better now than we did in years past, we don't have that money available, like the-
Right. That is correct.
You know, unspent funds, both school and us, probably due to a more stable workforce and better budgeting, so.
I got something I want to bring up. It's somewhat off-topic, but it does have to do with what we're talking about. I wonder if it would prove beneficial for the city to have someone with the one job of writing and applying for grants. You know, we see it all the time in multiple departments, relying on grants to fund things, whether it's equipment or personnel. And, you know, we, as a city council, you know, the more grants we get, the better we can do. And the less city money we have to spend on things that we can get grant for, that allows us to throw money at other projects. And I think that's certainly a question for department heads, and see what their feelings are on that. And, you know, I just think having somebody with the expertise in writing and applying and acquiring grants would prove somewhat beneficial for the city. Do I think it needs to be a full-time position? No. But, you know, if we pay someone a decent salary to write grants for us, and they acquire a $150,000 grant, then, I mean, that's not necessarily a bad idea, in my mind. I don't know what anybody else thought about that.
My experience with that is, it's usually 10%, and they usually are independent contractors, and they write grants for you for 10%. In my limited experience with that, I've never had real good luck with them. But, you know, they are available.
All right. So anyway, what I am hearing is consensus to send the CIP down there. I'm hearing two other issues that council probably wants to talk about, which is salaries and grants. So anything else for the work session?
I just want to add the comment that I second Councilman Hux's comments relative to the teachers and city employees pay. It's been too little, too long.
Anything else? Okay, let's go to the regular meeting.